Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. Would a clerk please take the role?
Mr. Sharland, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kiel Smith, Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its cause. Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agendas. There are motion to amend?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is proclamations. We'll begin with Councilwoman Warwick.
Hi, does everyone here for Age Friendly Greater Pittsburgh want to come up? Yeah, just, just, yeah.
Yep.
Great. Right. Great. Okay, so. Whereas, Age Friendly Greater Pittsburgh is an initiative of Southwestern Pennsylvania Partnership for Aging and University of Pittsburgh School of Social Work dedicated to making our region more inclusive and respectful of all ages. And whereas, October 9th, 2024 is Ageism Awareness Day, an internationally recognized day for drawing attention to the impact of ageism in our society. And whereas, ageism refers to the stereotypes, how we think, prejudice, how we feel, and discrimination, how we act toward ourselves and others based on age, impacting all of us at every stage of life. And whereas, ageism affects the physical and mental health, longevity, and financial well-being of people of all ages, shortening our lifespans by as many as 7.5 years. And whereas, ageism disproportionately affects communities of color who have historically experienced disparities across income, education, and other social determinants of health, resulting in vast differences in life expectancy. And whereas, our region has one of the greatest concentrations of older adults in the United States. And whereas, one in five Allegheny County residents, that's over a quarter of a million people, are ages 65-plus, who are disproportionately impacted by ageism. And whereas, older adults are the fastest-growing segment of our workforce and active contributors to our communities. And whereas, more than 120 local and regional partners collaborate with Age Friendly Greater Pittsburgh, part of the World Health Organization Global Network of Age Friendly Cities and Communities, led by AARP in the U.S., to prevent ageism and promote age inclusion across all sectors of our society, including education, employment, housing, culture, and healthcare. And whereas, in Allegheny County and the city of Pittsburgh, the Allegheny County Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging helps residents 65-plus of all races, genders, incomes, and backgrounds to live safe, healthy, and independent lives, in part by funding and supporting operations of a network of senior centers, including City Park's Healthy Active Living Centers. And whereas, raising ageism awareness, preventing ageism, and promoting age inclusion will benefit people of all ages in Allegheny County and the city of Pittsburgh by improving our quality of life within our region. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby recognizes October 9th, 2024, as Ageism Awareness Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Maybe you have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Councilperson Warwick. We are so happy to be here today. My name is Laura Poskin. I'm the Executive Director of Age Friendly Greater Pittsburgh. And as the councilperson said, we're all about making our region more inclusive and respectful of all ages. We know that our region is one of the oldest in the country, and that's a fact and an asset. We know that our older adults want to work and need to work. That's why we put that as part of the proclamation today. So any sort of workforce development that's happening needs to include people of all ages. And I just want to say, I said this to our advocates earlier today. I started this work. I became a gerontologist because I was really close with my grandparents, and I still think about them and honor them in the work that I do. And we have to realize and celebrate that we're all aging our whole lives. And aging is something that, in a time that is so divided, we can really unite behind the fact that we're all aging across our life course. So, thank you so much for making this proclamation, that tomorrow is Ageism Awareness Day. And we are here every day, though, as part of your community. Thanks a lot. Oh, yes, oh, yes, come on up. Hi, Laura. Thank you very much. Thank you so much for being here. Hi. Thank you. Thinking about our kids.
Right. So, everyone look at me, and on the count of three.
Are we all, can I get a count first?
Back in, y'all. All right, ready? On the count of three. One, two, three, say, "Age friendly."
Age friendly.
Yay. Can we do a count?
Ready.
Yeah, okay.
One more, one more. Cheese.
Cheese.
Yay. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Oh, really? I'm just saying. Well, I mean, they were really bad.
Yeah, I know. Terrible. So, our next, our next order of business is going to be public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which may be forced to the council. Perpetuating will not be permitted. After your call, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Beltshever, London, United Kingdom, New York City, United States. There's more than $40 trillion in capitalization in each of these cities, and they are the one and two world leaders financially. I'm a Global Intelligence Society candidate for President 2024, globalinfointelligencenetwork@gmail.com. In the early 2000s, I became a member of the American Economic Association. Council concern is the economy and with it the budget, here and in Washington especially. It is with myself. You know, the CGSI, which I founded, Pennsylvania Corporation 2831602. In the program of education course that I teach is Introduction to Global Economic Studies, and one of the foci of that course is gross domestic product. You know what the central equation is, counselors? Harris and Gani seem to be oblivious to it. C plus I plus G plus XN. C meaning private consumption, I business investment, G government spending, XN net exports. Tatalan Casa, the economy, African Casa, of the United States, of which Dikay Zai, economy, Asian Nihongo, of the city of Pittsburgh is part, produces a U.S. American GDP nominal approaching more than $29 trillion for 2025. This is the world's greatest. Economia, economy in South America and Espanol, of the United States, is energized by more than 31 million businesses, of which more than 30 million, more than 99%, are small business corporations with a max of 500 employees. D.P. Harris had one. Small businesses like Payatiti Inti in Squirrel Hill, beautiful place, domine di verchost, European Deutsch economy of Pittsburgh, me iglo ren, Jinji, U.S. economy, Asian Jongwen, endures at overall, bei kokomen fu zai, Nihongo, U.S. American national debt, which approaches more than $29 trillion. This is due to deficit spending, $6.2 trillion of expense, over 4.2, 4.5 trillion in revenue in 2023, and Biden and Harris are asking for $1 trillion more for 2025. I think this is a big problem. So, the budget of the U.S. government, in my view, should be defunded by 90%, defunded in all departments, and that would direct the tax money back to localities. Local government is primary.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ralph Williams.
Yes, hello. Thank you, President Lavelle, members of council. It's great to be here to speak today. I live at 803 East Warren Avenue, Caliguri Plaza, which is now being reconstructed due to a fire, and I want to thank Sir Pro for taking care of that as well. My main reason for speaking here today is I'm very, very upset with this council, and I'm upset with the mayor's office, because, oh, and if you notice today, I'm not here to talk about PCTV, because the producers, myself and some other producers, we have a meeting set up with Deputy Mayor Pollak, so, and I want to thank him for that as well, for us getting that meeting set up, to talk about PCTV, since no one in this council bothered to return my phone calls. But anyway, I'm talking about the police and the budget. You cut it again from 860 to 800. You have an issue in town here with violence. You have an issue with homeless people having problems. Oh, by the way, I want to compliment Bobby Wilson for his actions with the Allegheny Trail. It's about time somebody in this council step up and do something about this homeless problem, and I'm glad that he's stepped up and done something to take care of this problem with the Allegheny Trail. But to cut the police down to 800, I mean, at one time, we had a police force of 900, 1,000 officers, and I get the problem is recruiting, and I get the problem is trying to find people. It's all across the board. But there's no excuse for the lack of public safety. There is no excuse at all for that. And I find, and I blame this council, I blame the mayor's office for not doing more due diligence to try to straighten out this public safety problem. And every time you keep cutting police, you know what that means? That means you want to defund them. And that's exactly where this is going. And you know what? I hope you have egg on your face for this whole thing, because you know why? I don't like it, and I know folks who are probably sitting in the chambers there don't like it, and the folks out there that are watching this don't like it, and the citizens of this city don't like it. Because you know why? It's a lack of public safety. And it's bad when you keep cutting the police down. Have a great day. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak at this time, please come forward, provide your name, give your neighborhood for the record.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Stanley Andrew Lowe. I'm a resident of Manchester, and I'm here today speaking on behalf of Pittsburgh Neighborhood Preservation Services. I came in the building today, and I saw a statue outside. Took me back a while. I'm 22 years old, and I get a telephone call from Richard Caliguri, and he says, "I'm on the other side." And I said, "What do you mean?" He says, "You're a neighborhood advocate. I want to know both sides." He would meet with us, neighborhood, once a month, to have just conversations of what's going on in the neighborhood. I want to thank Jake Wheatley for doing the same thing a week ago, and I want to thank Mayor Ed Gany for doing the same thing. I'm here today on two occasions, two reasons. One, we're requesting the opportunity to become a RCO in our neighborhood. We believe we should be. The ordinance does not allow city council to inhibit us. It doesn't say anything about holding applications up. It says, "In order to be one, you have to get a recommendation from city council." So we're asking that Councilman Dan Lavelle give us a recommendation. Second reason I'm here today is, I've learned a long time ago. I started the Pittsburgh Community Reinvestment Group, so I know what research is all about. We've taken the opportunity to review not only the RCO law, but we've also taken the opportunity, if you may, to look at the status of where every RCO organization is in the city of Pittsburgh. Just like to read something to you. We are doing our RCOs a great disservice, and we need to correct this. There are 42 RCOs in the city of Pittsburgh. Organizations with no EIN is 19% eight. Organizations with no certification at the state, 45% 19. Organizations whose BCO certificate has expired is eight. Organizations with no 990s out of the 42 is 16, 38%. Organizations with outdated 990s, 57% or 24. Organizations with non-functioning websites, 12, I mean, 5, 5%. And organizations without meeting, having meeting minutes online, 12, an additional 29%. I've tried to meet with Mr. Bay at planning. He's not following those meetings. I know when I step down, you're going to question everything I've said. You're going to look at it. You're going to look into details. That's great. I hope you do do that. But when you allow RCOs to exist and talk to developers and be out there, and they're not qualified to do that, we're setting them up. And that's a disservice to them, and that's a disservice to the city of Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Jason Bolton. I live in Bloomfield on Choate Way. I'm happy to be a business owner. Also happen to work in politics, so you know me from that. Been fortunate to work for folks who run for council, and I've also been fortunate to work for some folks who've been doing some other things as well. Hit and miss, you know? I'm here today to ask about a couple of things, some issues up in Bloomfield that I've raised with my councilperson for about two years now, and I haven't seen any response at all. It's gotten to the point where there's been a little bit of violence, and so I'm coming to council because I've seen something in other areas of the city that we could use. If we can't get something permanent, we need some traffic calming on some of the streets just south of Penn Avenue. I live on Choate Way, and people who are moving into this area don't know that these are way streets that are two-way streets. And we have traffic moving from Shenship Avenue over to Pearl Street, for instance, that just come running through there. Children have also been hit. I've had to, you know, do my best as a neighbor, regardless of, you know, where they're from, letting them know, "Hey, these are two-way streets." And we've almost come to blows because they don't understand that. We need a local traffic-only sign. I understand that requires a traffic study. I've talked to my councilperson now for two years. There's a reason why, you know, sometimes we don't agree. One of these things is now I've seen these temporary A construction things up near the O'Connor Course and up at near Amberson that say, "Local traffic only. Please slow down." If we can't get one of the permanent signs, these temporary signs could really do a lot to help people know that we need to stop this traffic moving so quickly over in these way streets. A child's going to get hit. I've almost come to blows twice over it. Additionally, about the Diesel shooting, this is in Lawrenceville. I'm a member of Ninth Ward Committee. Now's the time for us to get over there and do what we can to culturally competently help this restaurant, do what it can to sort of take its future back. I pick up people there all the time driving Lyft who looked at me saying, "Get me out of here." I've been sort of jokingly threatening myself. You could see it going in a certain direction. If we don't do everything we can now, a restaurant that is culturally significant but is losing its ability to control the crowd might have to close. And so, again, I don't see my councilperson here. I understand maybe she needs to be somewhere else, but now's the time to do something there, because this is now the second shooting of three people, and it's heading for closure if we don't do something now. And there's a chance right now, if people want to do something, if we can find money, if there's a program, otherwise it's going to be called a nuisance bar. It's not a bar. It's a restaurant. But in my opinion, if we don't intervene now, it should close. Thanks, and I'll see you all around. Take care.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Howard H.P. Jackson, B.PEP. I grew up with NAACP, all my life in Pittsburgh. Let me reflect on 1700. There was a fellow named Willie Lynch, and I see the episodes today with a fellow named Trump running for president again. Now, the epics of the governor from Georgia, Kemp, he advocated with the Willie Lynch syndrome, with free labor, his ancestors got rich, and they're controlling the advocates for black people not to vote. People of color, period. All right. So the tradition of like 1857, March the 6th, Supreme Court said, like, people of color wouldn't recognize as American citizens, and we built the White House. Okay. Now, what I, my point is, it's so important right now to get out there and vote. Now, we got two more years for 250 years to say, like, we are united as a country, and we have a diplomat right now that's like trying to present himself Hitler. You know, the Holocaust with the Jews. Now, let's mention about Europe, but you're not looking at the traditions of Americans, of us being second-class citizens. It's so important right now for the Quakers, to abolitionists, and the human right people to get out and register and vote. It's so important right now. We have a democracy that's getting ready to disappear, and we have to go on out there and be united, united as a people, to understand the results of what's threatening right now of this country. I know we come down here and complain about the mayor with a quick fix, and they forgot about the other fellow that was mayor before. Now they're coming up with these here crises. Now, we know today, there's no quick fix for what's going on today. But I need your, I need your help and support to get people to advocate and vote, because our country is in jeopardy right now. Think about it, how people of color had the Willie Lynch syndrome of fear, and I see it advocating again in 2024, with a fellow that's running for president to advocate fear again. And we should be united. We should be united. I'll be down here to give you another episode of Willie Lynch. You need to know about that fellow, because he invented fear for people of color. Thank you. I'm just a soul brother. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Special Agent Sunshine here. How's everybody? It's a lot. We gotta let the Willie Lynch thing go. Again, this 2024. The issue right now, it's 47,000 people on the street. Why? How? Why do numbers keep increasing? The problem with this whole issue right here, this whole room, everybody in here on this board, the problem is the whole setup. Y'all don't have to respond to our questions right now. We only get three minutes. You talk about the issues after we speak. I promise you, that's going to change. You're going to have to address our issues in front of us. The mayor needs to be present for these meetings. It's crazy. You have the homeless meetings downstairs outside while you have your meetings up here. Really? Here's the thing. All of you make so much money. There's 47,000 people on the street. Guess what God sees? Your hearts. How many of you are willing to go in your pockets? Lavelle, you make $87,000 a year. Why nobody come in here and say, "Thank you, Lavelle, for giving me and 20 of my homeless friends rooms for a month"? You make enough money to do that? Why you won't? Because your heart just ain't in it. And I promise you, God sees it, and he's the one that makes it beat. Keep playing with him. He doesn't have to. For none of us, we all have a death sentence, I promise you. And when that day comes, he's the one that's going to make it come. Why? He's the one that sees your heart. He's the one that will know the reason why. It's time for us to go. Nobody cares. Right now, everybody living their life, you know, everybody's going to the beach when y'all off, what y'all do with y'all money when y'all go off. Y'all ain't helping us. We out here in the street. And I'm okay. I promise you, I live in peace. I'm not out here doing voodoo spells on people, killing them for money. I'm not out here chasing money. I don't need money to look like this. It is what it is. Had this quick scripture. I'm gonna leave it with that. Proverbs 3:5 through 6. Trust in the Lord with all thine heart. Lean not unto thine own understanding. In all thy ways acknowledge him, and he shall direct your paths. He directed me right here to this darkness, to shine a light on it, and that's why I come every time, to shine a light on it. Your hearts is the light we're shining today. That's what we're shining the light on today. Where's your heart? Ain't none of y'all reaching in y'all pockets to help us. You're blocking me from working. It's okay. I work for him now. You will never block my communication with him and what he has me doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Burn it up from Beachview. Alvin and the Chipmunks, we assume can read instructions of rat poison. Rats are extremely smart. As a result, the bait city uses apparently is a slow kill. This makes them roaming bait outside the box. Poisoned peanut butter placed outside public access areas in Brookline. A church is doing this right now in an alley in Brookline, peanut butter. Picture taken last night. Three aisles found dead after eating poisoned rodents and/or moved bait from bait boxes. Reports of feral's poison. Vet checked groundhog poison. Dogs poisoned. Foxes poisoned. Irresponsible neighbors placed in tainted poison wherein dogs use multiple have died in Brookline. You have city animal control staffer who got defensive with me for her department, understandable, but she couldn't grasp that the menagerie of animals and birds of prey can get poisoned because the bait doesn't always stay in the box, and Alvin and the Chipmunks missed the memo to stay away. Nor could she understand the farmer in the dale song wherein the cat eats the rats, or that the database is needed for transparency for people so that they can, they could see where the increased infestations is in baits. Buying a home, you want to learn about all this after you pay, you get a 30-year mortgage? Cities, New York, Nassau, there are cities all over the United States that have it mandated that anytime rat poison or chemicals are put out. My own kid at the age of five, and I talked about this here before, about where people were spraying chemicals. My five-year-old was rushed to Mercy Hospital, then to Children's. Why? Because she ate a vegetable.
Poisoned peanut butter placed outside public access areas in Brookline. A church is doing this right now in an alley in Brookline, peanut butter. Picture taken last night. Three aisles found dead after eating poisoned rodents and/or moved bait from bait boxes. Reports of feral's poison. Vet-checked groundhog poison, dogs poisoned, foxes poisoned. Irresponsible neighbors placing tainted poison wherein dogs use multiple have died in Brookline. You have city animal control staffer who got defensive with me for her department, understandable, but she couldn't grasp that the menagerie of animals and birds of prey can get poisoned because the bait doesn't always stay in the box, and Alvin and the Chipmunks missed the memo to stay away. Nor could she understand the farmer in the dale song wherein the cat eats the rats, or that the database is needed for transparency for people so that they can, they could see where the increased infestations is in baits. Buying a home, you want to learn about all this after you pay, you get a 30-year mortgage? Cities, New York, Nassau, there are cities all over the United States that have it mandated that any time rat poison or chemicals are put out. My own kid at the age of five, and I talked about this here before about where people were spraying chemicals. My five-year-old was rushed to Mercy Hospital, then to Children's. Why? Because she ate a vegetable in our neighbor's yard that was sprayed, and she was sensitive to it. We have the right to know if poison is being placed either by the city or private owners, and it should be done responsibly. Cats for the catch and release, good idea. However, some of them are just like, I'm coming with a trap. My kid, when she was little, climbed over the fence to get her ball and found a starving cat in a cage. This was years ago, but there needs to be control, there needs to be mandates, there needs to be laws. Transparent, transparency, we need to know what chemicals are being sprayed. This is responsible living, period. And a database cannot be that hard. You can go to a high school and get a kid to make it. Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll actually, we'll return to proclamations with Councilwoman
Thank you, Mr. President. Doug Praskovich and family, please come forward. I apologize, I was running late, too. Thank you for coming back to the proclamations. His grandkid ran out the door. At some point, I'm actually going to give a proclamation for the Praskovich family. They do so much in our district and so much across the city of Pittsburgh. Is your family coming in? Oh, well, I'll talk, I'm good. So, I'll just say, Doug, in our district, St. Patrick's Day doesn't begin until Doug Praskovich and his son show up at Smitty's in Sheridan to start to kick off the party every year. His son does the bagpipes. Hi, everyone. Whereas retired battalion chief Douglas Praskovich, son of a single parent George Praskovich, grew up in Sheridan, in the Sheridan neighborhood with four brothers and sisters, and has been a resident of the city of Pittsburgh his entire life. And whereas, and even when firemen were allowed to leave, they stayed. So, thank you. District Two. Whereas, his family, his family were members of Holy Innocence Catholic Church in Sheridan. He attended Holy Innocence Grade School. Doug believes that his father's devotion to God, family, and country gave them the strength and courage to face the challenges and opportunities in life. And whereas, Douglas graduated from Langley High School in 1978 and was a member of the Langley Mustangs football team. So was my son. He did a good job on the bench. He earned an associate degree from Community College of Allegheny County and attended Robert Morris University, graduating with a bachelor's degree in transportation management. Boy, we could use him right now with PRT. All the cuts, all the cuts are down there today, talking about the cuts they're doing in Sheridan. Whereas during the last semester of college, Doug took the civil service test to become a Pittsburgh firefighter and joined the City of Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire in 1987 and has served in each fire district within the city of Pittsburgh with dedication and courage. And whereas, after 36 years of service to the citizens of the city of Pittsburgh, Doug retired in March of 2023. And whereas, Doug has been married to the love of his life and his rock, Christina Praskovich, for over 37 years. Together, they have raised three beautiful children. Since retiring, he spends more time with his wife and eight grandchildren. He also enjoys outdoor activities and serves at the homeless, serves the homeless with St. Fatina's Gate and the Red Door Ministries of Divine Mercy Parish in downtown Pittsburgh. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Doug Praskovich for his years of service within the city of Pittsburgh and his commitment to family and community. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, October 8th, 2024 to be Douglas Praskovich Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
Second. First. Show move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
I want to thank all the members of City Council, and I would also like to extend my heartfelt appreciation to Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith, not only for her leadership but also for being a true advocate for our community. Thank you, Councilwoman Smith, for your many years of dedicated service to the city of Pittsburgh and to the residents of District Two in particular. It was her persistence concerning this honor that I reluctantly accepted. This is however, an opportunity for me to express my gratitude for all the years I served you as a Pittsburgh firefighter. First of all, I'd like to thank God for the many blessings He has bestowed on me throughout my life, the gift of life, the beauty of His creation, and namely, the countless people who have personally and professionally guided, mentored, and taught me the many life lessons that have served me well throughout my life and my career. I wish to also sincerely thank my wife Christina, our children and grandchildren, family members, friends, for their unwavering support and love. Ever since I was a boy, when I was away from home, I always felt a sense of pride to tell people, hey, I'm from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. And the reason for this sense of pride was the great people of our city. Pittsburgh's a tapestry of honest, hard-working, faithful, friendly people who each and every day make Pittsburgh extraordinary place to live. To the citizens of Pittsburgh, I'd like to express that it's been an honor and a privilege to serve you as a Pittsburgh firefighter. Finally, I would also like to thank Fire Chief Daryl Jones, President Ralph Securo, and the Executive Board of Pittsburgh Firefighters Local One, and all the past and present members of the Pittsburgh Firefighters Local One for their examples of dedication and professionalism in serving all the, all who live, work, and visit our great city. This honor that I receive is truly belongs to each and every one of you. In my 36 years as a Pittsburgh firefighter, I've witnessed many acts of bravery and courage by our firefighters operating under incredibly stressful situations. I've also experienced many acts of kindness and compassion for people in their darkest hour by the men and women of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire. Pittsburgh firefighters have always had a proud tradition of passing on to our present firefighters the unyielding determination to protect life and save the lives and property of the citizens of Pittsburgh to the best of our ability. It is because of this commitment to excellence that I've always felt an immense feeling of pride, and now being retired, I have to admit, a sense of sadness when I tell people, I was a Pittsburgh firefighter. I served with the best of the best. Thank you.
We're gonna take a picture right here, but I should have also mentioned in the that you also do a lot of work for the American Legion in Sheridan too, and for the veterans. Do you want to guess what all come up? He's also Ralph's neighbor.
That'll move us on to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Charlin, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. And Councilman Cockhill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness. Councilman Charlin for Councilman Cockhill.
Thank you. Councilman Cockhill presents Bill 1006, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into one-year reimbursement agreements with six local youth sports organizations at a total cost not to exceed $90,000 over one year. Bill 1007, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an agreement or agreements with 4012 Paul LLC for professional licensed veterinary services to the city's Department of Public Safety Bureau of Animal Care and Control at an overall cost to the city not to exceed $124,000 over four years. Bill 1024, Resolution Authorizing and Directing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to terminate the 1991 Cooperation Agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and the County of Allegheny for the lease of the Municipal Courts Building and further forthwith to grant and convey the Municipal Courts Building to the County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania or to any other interested party.
And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill 1008, Resolution Amending Resolution 638 of 2024, effective September 24, 2024, with which authorize the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with Matrix Point Software LLC in an amount not to exceed $310,000 over six years for software, professional support, and related training services related to litigation case management for the city's Department of Law by updating the applicable code account. Bill 1009, Ordnance Amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title V Traffic Article VII Parking Chapter 550 Mobility Enhancement District Section 550.04 Pilot Program in order to extend the pilot program to account for delays in implementation of the Mobility Enhancement District.
Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to motion to waive Rule 8 for Bill 2024-1008 to appear on tomorrow's standing committee.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 1008 will be on tomorrow's agenda. And that takes us to Councilwoman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Mosley presents Bill 1010, Resolution Adopting the Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the Espalier project. This site is located on multiple parcels within the Allegheny County in the 21st Ward of the City of Pittsburgh at no cost to the city. Bill 1011, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the following addresses. 1007 McCartney Street, 1017 McCartney Street, 420 Green Tree Road, 422 Green Tree Road, and 434 Green Tree Road at no cost to the city. And Bill Number 1012, Resolution Providing for Cooperative Agreement or Agreements with the University of Pittsburgh Medical Center to reimburse expenses of UPMC incurred for public work at the intersection of Fifth Avenue and DeSoto Street related to the city's Smart Pittsburgh project performed in the course of the completion of UPMC Presbyterian Bed Tower at an amount not to exceed $50,000.
And Councilwoman Kail Smith, Chair of Recreation Youth and Senior Services.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 1014, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements with the U.S. Department of Transportation for the purpose of receiving grant funds from the Charging and Fueling Infrastructure Program in the amount of $2,396,406.51 to support the city's equitably empowering EV ownership in the city of Pittsburgh through community charging infrastructure project. The grant requires a match from the City of Pittsburgh in the amount of $38,997.08. The Pittsburgh Parking Authority in the amount of $91,000, and Duquesne Light in the amount of $470,600 for this stated purpose, for a total project cost of $2,997,305.9. Bill 1015, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020, effective December 23, 2020, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and a 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and a 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by increasing self-size signals tip by $437,603 to account for additional federal highway administration funding being received by the city of Pittsburgh. Bill 1016, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and a 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and a 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by reducing bus rapid transit by $50,000 and increasing advanced transportation and congestion management technology development administered as the Smart Pittsburgh project by $50,000. Bill 1017, Resolution Authorizing an Interdepartmental Transfer in the amount of $100,000 from the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to the Department of City Planning to support work relating to transit-oriented development in home rule. And Bill 1018, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Finance to enter into an agreement with Carnegie Mellon University for a real estate subdivision and exchange involving two parcels having identification numbers 80N59 and 80N8 at no cost to the city.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1019, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the construction phase of the Self-Size Signals Project and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $4,748,556, an increase of $437,603 from the previously passed authorization reimbursable at 100%.
And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. And on behalf of myself, if we could begin with the communication.
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number 1020, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting to City Council the Attached Status Update from the Grant's Office for the week ended October 4, 2024.
I need a motion to read, receive, and file.
Show move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will be read, received, and filed, and we need to, we could read the petition now.
Bill 1021, Petition from the Residents of the City of Pittsburgh Requesting a Public Hearing Before City Council Relative to the Importance of Manchester Neighbors Becoming a Registered Community Organization and to Provide an Update from Pittsburgh's Department of City Planning Regarding the 2019 Manchester Plan. The petition is valid in accordance with the Home Rule Charter.
So we need a motion to hold for a public hearing, someone will offer?
Motion to hold for.
Cable.
Motion to hold for cable cast public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll work with the clerk to get that scheduled. That takes us to Reports of Committee for Final Action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Presenting the Committee on Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 1000, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for October 2, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 946, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Comer Miller LLC for Legal Services in Connection with the Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $10,138 over one year. Bill 947, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Summers McDonald Houdak Guthrie and Rouch PC for Expert Legal Services in Connection with the Litigation Matter in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an Amount Not to Exceed $15,200 over one year. Bill 948, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Spillman Thomas and Battle P L L C for Expert Legal Services in Connection with the Litigation Matter in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an Amount Not to Exceed $12,432 over one year. And Bill 974, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a project labor agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Regional Building and Construction Trades Council, AFL-CIO Building Trades, that will apply to all phases of installation of the city's LED streetlight conversion construction project at no cost to the city.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Charlin.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bills have received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Anthony Coghill, presenting on the Committee of Public Safety and Wellness.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1001, Reported a Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for October 2, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 943, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $100,000 to support forensic genetic testing by the Bureau of Police.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Charlin.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill has received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, presenting on Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1002, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for October 2, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 950, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with the U.S. Department of Energy's Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program for the purpose of receiving grant funds in the amount of $337,960 for the installation of solar panels at the city's 4th Division. Bill 951, Resolution Authorizing the City of Pittsburgh, the Director of Public Works and the Director of Finance to enter into an easement agreement or agreements with Duquesne Light Company to provide install, use, own, operate, maintain, repair, renew, and finally remove two light poles and one anchor along with 30 feet of vegetation clearing rights located upon city-owned property in the parking lot of the Pittsburgh Zoo at no cost to the city. Bill 952, Resolution Granting unto Enchion Ventures LLC, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense at no cost to the city, new permanent shoring and footers above grade unit balconies and building facade elements that will extend into the right-of-way at 3239th Street in the 6th Ward, 7th Council District of the City of Pittsburgh. Bill 953, Resolution Granting unto the Standard BCC, BCLC, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense at no cost to the city, new permanent building footers and building canopy that will extend into the right-of-way at 2125th Avenue in the 4th Ward, 6th Council District of the City of Pittsburgh.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Charlin.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill has received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilperson Robert Charlin, presenting the Committee on Human Resources.
Councilperson Charlin presents Bill Number 1025, Reported a Committee on Human Resources for October 2, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 941, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Municipal Investigations to enter into an agreement or agreements with VersaTerm formerly known as CI Technologies to extend the current agreement and amend the name of the vendor in an amount not to exceed $7,282.8 over one year for OMI's Electronic Case Management System IA Pro. Bill 942, Resolution Providing for Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Rita Porterfield in an amount not to exceed $15,000 as a settlement for an EEOC case over one year.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If not, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Charlin.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill has received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, presenting on the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill 1003, Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for October 2, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2330, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning, Article 902.03 Zoning Map by changing from UCE Urban Center Employment to RMU Residential Mixed Use certain properties located on McKee Place in the 4th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, known in the Allegheny County Office of Deed Registry as block and lot numbers 28F314, 28F310, 28F308, 28F306, 28F304, and 28F302.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If not, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Charlin.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill has received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith, presenting on the Committee of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents Bill Number 1004, Reported a Committee on Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services for October 2, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 949, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an agreement or agreements with Allegheny County Department of Human Services for the city's operation of its senior community centers. Said agreement or agreement shall be for a term of one year at no cost to the city with compensation to the city not to exceed $773,100.
You've heard the reading, excuse me. Yeah, you've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? If not, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Charlin.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill has received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. And that takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, presenting on the Committee of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill 1005, Reported a Committee on Innovation Performance Asset Management and Technology for October 2, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 945, Resolution Amending Resolution 629 of 2023, Further Amending Resolution 484 of 2022, Further Amending Resolution 647 of 2021, Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections, the Director of City Planning, and the Director of Innovation and Performance to enter into an amended professional service agreement or agreement with Building I Inc. to purchase software and related support services that will create an interactive map for internal and public visual display of planning, permit, license, and violation data by increasing the approved amount by increasing, by increasing it by $40,596 for an amended total cost not to exceed $627,936 over eight and a half years.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you. I do want to say that last week during our Standing Committee meeting, I had a couple concerns that I mentioned about PLNI. And I do want to say that I had a very good conversation with the director after our meeting, and it was, it was a positive meeting. Although I mentioned that I think that PLNI does belong, it still belongs under public safety as it used to be. And I still believe that, and I think that we need to start looking at some of the departments and some of the restructuring, some of the offices and some of the things happening here in the City of Pittsburgh, between our budget, between inspections, finance, all the things that we're hearing, we have a responsibility to look at those things clearly and to make sure they're making the right decisions for the City of Pittsburgh. For me, with this whole thing with PLNI, I think part of it is, is that we've had properties that needed inspections that we don't hear a lot about, a lot of feedback about, about. And I realize sometimes they're doing a lot of work with the county and the state and other places for some of these properties. But I think it's one of the reasons zoning is so important coming up in some of the discussions that we're having about zoning in the City of Pittsburgh. I'll just say, I think, you know, our side of town thinks very differently than other parts of the city. And it somehow works really well for our side of town. So we don't really necessarily want to change things the way because a few people in other sections of the city think that they should be changed. We're here to represent the people that voted us into office. So for me, I'm going to say, I have a lot of concerns, continue to have a lot of concerns. A lot of them are with inspections of a property in Bangsville, zoning of a property in Bangsville, and things that I feel like I have been having, I've been needing to jump through hoops to make sure we're protecting and representing what our communities want on our side of town. And I'm just here to say that I'm ready to put legislation in to do whatever we need to do to protect our side of town and to take whatever steps we need to take, whether that's Southwest Pittsburgh extended together and with some people in other parts of the city, which we've already been approached about, then we're going to do whatever we have to do southwest of the Pittsburgh to keep our areas nice. And we expect our departments to do what we need them to do, and we expect directors to respond to us when we send information. I do want to thank Director Green because he did respond after that meeting to an email. But I'll say that there's a lot of things happening in our side of town, which seems very purposeful and really intended to not, not be in the best interest of Southwest Pittsburgh. And so for those things, I'm probably going to start calling for some post agendas, and I'll definitely have some public hearings and public meetings within our districts and within our neighborhoods, and we're coming to other neighborhoods too. Because it's time, if everybody's going to have a say in what happens southwest Pittsburgh, we're going to have a say in other neighborhoods. And I guarantee you, I know more people across the city than some of the other people. So I'm ready to have those conversations.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Charlin.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill has received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Is there anything for members? If not, we do have meeting announcements. Tomorrow, Wednesday, October 8 at 10:00 a.m., Council will hold our Standing Committee Meeting. Speaker Registration will close at 9:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. Also, Wednesday at 2:30, Council will hold a briefing on neighborhood economic development net funding. And then on Thursday, October 10, Council will hold a Cablecast Public Hearing on Bill 221 as relates to zoning map changes on Shady Avenue. Registration closes at 12:30 the day of the hearing. To register to speak at any of these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the Council meeting webpage by the deadline. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you. I apologize. I should have mentioned that I want to offer my condolences, and next week I'd like to do a moment of silence for Joy Akry, who worked for the URA and the City of Pittsburgh. Her brother was Gerald Akry, is Gerald Akry, who ran Animal Care and Control for the City of Pittsburgh. They're an amazing family, and Joy passed away unexpectedly on Thursday. So I want to offer our condolences to the, to the entire Akry Adams family. Thank you.
Anything else? If not, motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
I move. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we are adjourned.